To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Selectmen, oh, is anybody audio or video recording in the audience? Don't see anybody, okay. Selectmen's comments and announcements. Selectmen. Lapointe.
I don't think at this time.
Selectmen Anderson.
I would like to thank Tina Santos. I saw her out there working on the medians, cleaning and sprucing up the town.
You're welcome.
And I just have two announcements. I just remind everyone that tomorrow night is Candidates Forum. At 7:00 PM here in this auditorium. This will be your chance to meet and hear from the Candidates for Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Board of Health and Housing Authority before you get to vote. If you can't make it, you can watch it live on local Comcast Channel 8. Also, after listening to the Candidates, the annual town elections will be held a week from today on Monday, May 1st, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the old Murdoch Senior Center at 52 Murdoch Avenue. Please come out and vote. First on the agenda, we have a meeting with the Board of Health, joint meeting with the Board of Health, for the appointment of Brandon Fornier to complete a vacancy on the Board of Health. And so I'll turn this over to Town Manager or the Board of Health, whoever wants to jump in. Board of Health.
Good evening. We are, I'm going to call the meeting to order, Board of Health meeting, and I would like to, at this time, say we would like to appoint Brandon Fornier to complete the vacancy for one year until 2024. Do I, I call roll call, Glenn?
I'd like to make a motion, I second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Board votes unanimously for Brandon.
Is Mr. Fornier here?
Brandon.
Could we hear from Mr. Fornier as to, you know, why you want to be on the Board of Health?
Good evening. So I've lived in town for, going on a few years now, and I absolutely love this town, and I've been on the zoning board for some time now, and looking to spend some more of my free time doing what I can to help our town and see that it continues to grow and be the great place that it is.
Good, thank you. Any other questions?
No questions, just a thank you for stepping up.
Of course, my pleasure.
And the only other question I have, and this is for the Board, Board of Health. Now, let's see, you said this is for a term for one year?
Yes.
Isn't this filling Keith Kent's position?
That's for one year until 2024 election.
Okay, I thought his, I thought his term expired in 2025.
No, '24.
2024.
Keith Kent's position ran out same time mine does next year.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So we already have a motion on the floor, and you've already voted. So any further questions from Board of Selectmen?
No questions, do you need a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Fornier to a one-year term on the Board of Health.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone make the motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you for your time.
I was like, where did that guy swear?
I have those all over my house at different levels.
Yeah, just left in various spots. I'm losing my mind.
Next on the agenda, we have an appointment for the Cultural Council for Greg Vine. And is there any information on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vine had reached out expressing his interest in joining, in similar capacity we ran into last meeting, with some changes to the rules in terms of their ability to serve in separate capacities. So as you know, Mr. Vine serves on the School Committee. He is now cleared to serve on the Cultural Council, so he did send an email just expressing his interest in serving the community in that capacity.
Okay. Any comments from the Board?
No, just a question as to how many other seats are available on Cultural Council?
I think later we need to have an update on that.
Twelve.
It'll be 12?
I think 12.
Yeah.
After the appointment?
Um, yeah, I think it's 12.
Okay.
12 vacant?
But you'll have to, no, it's.
Well, that was my question, once the appointment happens.
Yeah, I need on our first appointment, so when we get to that, instead of 12, they have to.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
No other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would make a motion to appoint Greg Vine to the Cultural Council with the term expiring on 6/30/2025.
Second.
2023.
I got 2025.
You changed that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. 2025. Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the Chair is here now, okay?
My apologies.
We're just starting to jump the limits.
Okay. Give me just. All right, number five. We have 5.1, Daniel Brewer. This is a junk dealer secondhand license renewal, no issues from town departments. Any questions, comments from the Board? Okay, seen and hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the secondhand license renewal for Daniel Brewer as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. 5.2, we have another junk dealer secondhand license renewal, this is Ed's Scrap Metal. No issues from department heads, fee has been paid. Questions, comments from the Board? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the junk dealer secondhand license renewal for Ed's Scrap Metal as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded to approve, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, thank you. Next up, again, the secondhand license renewal, this is for Patty's Jewelers. No issues from department heads, fee has been paid, paperwork looks in order, thank you very much for scrubbing through it all for us. Questions, comments from the Board? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the junk dealer secondhand license renewal for Patty's Jewelry as presented this evening.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Yes, Mrs.
Clarity that these licenses are issued through the town, Clark thought that we just need the motorcycle to vote, so she issued the permits.
Yes, thank you very much. And then we do have an entertainment permit. This is for yoga in the park. From the Winchon Community Park Recreation Commission.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson?
I'm just curious, is this the same as the one that was being held in Old Center?
Hmm, I don't know. I know the yoga studio in town at one point was holding some, weren't they? Because I know I seen, haven't done it, I should, yoga in the park, you know, over the last year or so.
Yeah, and I feel like they were holding it up in Old Center now, is it going to move down to the community park?
Yeah, I don't know. That's a valid question, perhaps.
I can look into it and let you know.
You could just let us know, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Tiffany was going to be here, I don't think she realized the change of time, so.
Oh, no problem.
I'm not sure, I think there might have been another woman that did that in the Old Center.
That's what I'm thinking. And then this is through the Recreation Commission itself?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I just have a question, maybe I passed over it. What is the fee to use the park for this? I see that it's six weeks for $100, but I assume that's going to Stephanie who's running outdoor yoga. So I was just curious, what are we charging?
Because is it a business venture or is it a Winchon and Community Park venture, right?
Well, it's at the community park, and we set rates for using the park.
Would you like to just maybe table this one for a minute? Because Tiffany's right downstairs, maybe I can pull her up and get right to the, right to it.
Okay, I mean, just looking at it, it looks like the application came through Tiffany's, so I would say this.
There's no fee.
This is a town.
It's weird.
Yeah, yeah, if we could just bring that back at some point tonight, that would be great.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
The motion to table until Mrs. Newton is right.
Thank you, do I have a second? Oh, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We have 15 minutes. Does the Board wish to?
Start at 6:30, and I was reviewing the agenda downstairs and realized it was at 6:00, I was like, oh, obstacle! Hello?
Hi, well, we just agreed to table that until you could join us, so thank you for, thank you for coming right up. The question was, this is actually, you're applying for this for the town?
Yes.
Through the town, so it's not a private company that's doing this.
Correct.
Mr. Ward brought up the question about a fee for using the park, you know, recognizing this is a town-sponsored event, you know, there is a teacher coming in, how is this working out?
So we are selling the tickets for the program, and then we're paying the instructor. So it's like an event that we're putting on, correct?
Okay, so it's sponsored by the Recreation Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
So the park is charging the $100 for the six weeks?
Yes, and I believe it's $20 per individual class, yeah.
Okay.
So it's $100 for all six weeks, or $20 each time, or someone just wants to go?
Yes.
Okay. $20 per day. Oh, there it is, yeah. Okay. Did that answer the question?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Lapointe?
I'd make a motion to approve the entertainment permit for the Yoga in the Park series by the Recreation Commission.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, thank you, we have a second for discussion?
Only because.
Mrs. Anderson?
I'm having a hard time with the fees. And, I don't know, trying to get that straight in my head, and I guess it's no different than a concert, but at the same time, while we're charging $100 for six dates, I don't know, I'm struggling with it. When it's a community park thing. And what's to stop people from going and watching?
And what?
Watching, like if I wanted to go watch, if I rode my bike up there and went to watch.
Well, you could sit there and watch, I suppose.
I'm just saying.
I will say that our committee debated the price on this one, being that we did some research too about other outdoor yogas, some of them with animals, some of them include other things, wine or food or whatever after the yoga. All the ones that included something else were $40 a class, and any ones that were outdoor that didn't include anything else were $20 a class in the surrounding areas, like Hubbard St. Leominster, even Smith does one, Smith Country Cheese with their cows and stuff. So it was a reasonable rate compared to other classes that are being held that are very similar.
And you have to bring your own yoga mat, I'm assuming?
Yes, but you will see if you, if you bought the ticket for six weeks, you also will get a free water bottle, and you'll also be entered into raffle to win a new yoga mat and like a tank for exercise.
It has been seconded for discussion, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Are we, are you going to have like a list of activities up there so that people have an understanding when you have something going on? So that they can make appropriate arrangements, like for instance, if they were to go up to the park every, I don't know, Tuesday evening as part of their routine, they would know something's going on?
Yeah, so we do have, I don't think our kiosk is finished up there, but the plan is to have stuff posted at our kiosk there, as well as our new sign that was passed has an electronic scrolling area that will list all our upcoming events. And while it's not at the park, we do plan to post everything, I don't know if you guys have checked out the town website, but we had a new tab added next to like meeting, the calendar for meetings and its events calendar, and everything's posted on there, and events such as, especially like Winchon Stock where the park is rented, it's listed there that the park is rented and it will be closed for a private event on that date, so people will know too about that information.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Ms. Newton is here, I'll entertain a motion to take 7.1 out of order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so 7.1 is to accept a donation for the Recreation Department for $500, and this is from Fidelity Bank. Now, this is, I'm trying to remember the last conversation we had about accepting sponsorships, something about sponsorships were closed, or just for one event they were closed and something, if you could clarify?
Yes, so we had put a deadline of March 15th originally on the sponsorships for the grand opening. We've had a few latecomers come to the office and ask if we could still accept them, so we haven't, we're finalizing our new logo design for the park, so we haven't been able to send everything to the printer to get everything made up, so we did accept any last-minute ones that did come in. This is the last one that we received for that, and we did just recently open the sponsorships for the few events in 2023 that we spoke about a few weeks back. So we'll no longer be accepting any for the grand opening, any current sponsors will be going towards our programs that we spoke about before.
All right, perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments from the Board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My apologies. Tiffany, is there any chance you know offhand roughly how much you've taken in total in terms of donations?
In terms for the grand opening, $11,425, I believe.
Great job.
Yes. You and your team, and thank you everyone who's contributed to this.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. If there are any other questions, comments? We need a motion on this, correct?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to accept the generous $500 donation from Fidelity Bank as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. It is 6:20, I'll entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would like to call back to order this meeting of the Winchun Board of Selectmen at 6:29.
I'll call to order the Finance Committee meeting Monday, April 24th, 6:30 p.m.
We have a joint meeting this evening with the Finance Committee to review the final presentation of the special and annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Saltback, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll run through these together as a group, please, as we make our way through slide by slide. If you have a question, feel free to stop me. I'll be happy to answer it. With that, I'll kick it off. For the special town meeting portion, there was originally three items. It's been reduced down to two. We didn't have any prior year bills, so good work to the team for not having anything lingering around. So we dropped what was Article Two and then shifted Article Three to Article Two. So for special town meeting, Article One is the committee report. Typically, it would be with the Finance Committee, and I'll be coordinating with Chairman Kane once he gets back to determine what you might want to put in there.
Usually, we pass over this one, and we do the report on the regular town meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Article Two is the funding of snow and ice deficit. Typically, we work to absorb as much of this as possible within the budget. It was a particularly difficult year for storms. There wasn't a lot of snow, but there was a lot of ice, and that typically costs us more in the form of material and overtime. So the ultimate figure is about $460,000. As I mentioned, we're making an effort to absorb some of that in the budget as much as possible, just projecting out accounts that we feel there might be a little bit left over at the end of the year. So we're comfortable absorbing some of that, but are requesting $260,000 in the form of free cash to balance that out. I would also note that the fiscal '24 budget, as proposed, made steps to incrementally increase the snow and ice material line, the snow and ice overtime line, as well as the snow and ice reserve budget for the Finance Committee modestly, but a step in the right direction. And it would be my recommendation in future years to continue trying to push that up. That'll help you absorb that flow, so you're not stuck with a bad winter, holding the bag for a lot of leftover expense. Are there any questions on that item?
I did have a question.
Mrs. Anderson.
So we did put, because prior years, we've always put money into an account with Finance Committee for snow and ice, and we did do that, but we used that as well.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, went way over.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Article One, the annual town meeting. So this is where the Finance Committee will be providing their report. Article Two, enterprise account authorization article. So I spent some time over the weekend reviewing some of these language changes with legal counsel. For this item, it would create a enterprise fund for the Comcast cable agreement. What we're effectively doing is backing out the revenue and the expenses out of the general operating budget that we would typically have for things like the broadcasting booth, carving it out and setting it aside in its separate enterprise account. Reason being is part of that Comcast agreement currently, but as well as in years past, the funds that you receive from Comcast are supposed to be directly slated for the purposes of capital investments and repairs to the broadcasting equipment. Year over year, without having an enterprise account, those leftover funds were turned back in the form of free cash to the general operating budget and just absorbed. By having this enterprise account, you're going to be ensuring that that money is set aside for the purpose that we agreed to with Comcast. The benefit being, A, it's more transparent, because you're keeping track of those funds. It's not just disappearing at year end. But the second piece is the issue that you saw at the most recent special town meeting, where you had to fund out of free cash to try to catch up on that broadcasting equipment, so we can broadcast live and things like that. You're not going to run into that again, because you're going to have a built-in savings account effectively by using this enterprise account. So this particular article is exclusively establishing the enterprise account. Should it be established later in the town meeting, you'll see all the other enterprise accounts and where they're typically funded. You would see this purpose go through. Any questions? Article Three. So there are three parts here, Article Three, Article Four, and Article Five. So just as a rehash for folks working at home, for several years now, the town of Winchun, in conjunction with municipalities across the Commonwealth and really across the country, have been part of a class action settlement to deal with the opioid epidemic that we've seen across the nation for the better part of a decade or more at this point. The Massachusetts Attorney General negotiated on behalf of municipalities that bought into, effectively bought into this bargaining unit, and there was an award that came through. So Winchun will be seeing roughly $380,000 parted out over the next 16 years or so in varying increments. The problem is, if it was 380 up front, the town could probably do something a little more substantial. But where it's coming out in small increments, there's not much that you can really do that's going to have an impact. So the recommendation from the state was for municipalities to seek out regionalized efforts to implement opioid remediation efforts. And so we did just that in coordinating with Gamma Inc. out of Gardner, the City of Gardner, Templeton, Westminster, and Ashburnham. We're looking to pool our resources to try to put forth a good effort in providing more support to Gamma Inc., which provides regional response for opioid issues, and they provide a pretty steady stream of services to the town of Winchun. So it's our recommendation, after significant conversations among the Board of Selectmen, that incorporated feedback from our public safety teams, that we go in that direction. Article Three would effectively establish a revolving fund for those opioid payments. So when those payments come in, they can be held on this account. So I'll run through the three of them, and you'll see how they all interact. So that's what Article Three is doing. Article Four and Article Five kind of go hand in hand. So Article Four is basically saying, if you make this appropriation, it is going to dedicate annual payments from those remediation funds to address the opioid epidemic in perpetuity. So you wouldn't have to come back and have this as a standing article every single year in the annual town meeting. Article Five, with that said, for the first year, is making that appropriation, and you're voting and saying, we want to, you know, we're receiving these funds. We're going to appropriate those funds for that purpose. And so you'll actually see, with the exception of Gardner, who has a different form of government, but the other towns that are participating in this cohort all have these three articles in their annual town meeting. We've been working together and coordinating, making sure that they're all kind of going off at the same time. So does anybody have any questions for Articles Three, Four, and Five?
Mr. Saltback, on Article Four, it just references a stabilization fund. It does not reference the opioid abatement stabilization fund. Should it? Because at the moment, Article Four doesn't tell us anything about where the fees are coming from or what the fund is for.
I can ask the questions. I will say, I reviewed this with legal counsel over the weekend, and the group that we're working with is all moving forward with the same language, but I can double check.
Understand. Okay.
Just so we don't get it confused with the other stabilization fund.
Right. I think there needs to be some sort of header on this one.
And I had a question on Five. It says dedicate all or a percentage, which may not be less than 25% of the receipt. So is the town of Winchun using any of this money for something specific to the town, or is it all going to the group?
Excellent question, and thank you for asking. So the purpose of that language is that there are specific items that the town of Winchun negotiated as part of this agreement to make sure that we're effectively getting our fair share. So some of the concerns expressed among the Board of Selectmen during those conversations were that we were just going to cut a check to Gardner, and we would never see it again. And so we sat down with members of our public safety team to think about what are current existing expenses we have in town due to the opioid epidemic. And so among them were things as small as the cost to empty Sharps containers, for example, for needle drop-offs and things like that. So we did carve out a good handful of little things to make sure that the town of Winchun has those specific items covered outside of this agreement upfront.
And the pens, the injections for...
Yep, Narcan, and yes.
Narcan, yeah. Thank you.
Article Six, revolving fund authorization article. So this is a usual and customary article, and the figures haven't changed from previous years. Article Seven, the senior tax work-off. This was reduced by one number, down to $7,700. But that's a pretty usual and customary article. Article Eight, the Community Action Committee nonprofit support. So as you may recall, members of the CAC did come by to provide a status report to the Board of Selectmen at my request. So annually, we do appropriate a certain amount of funds, but I felt like there should be some type of follow-up, where they come by and kind of highlight the work that they're doing in the community. But as part of that conversation, they did mention and demonstrate that the need has really skyrocketed in town over the past couple of years, and the numbers that they've seen have increased. You know, there are some concerns with some folks. We talked about that. It's not only people of Winchun that CAC serves. It's a little bit of a regional hub as well, so that's something to be mindful of. But even that aside, the amount of increase that they've seen in terms of the need coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, where a lot of issues surrounding, you know, housing insecurity and food insecurity are continuing to increase, we felt like a modest increase, so this would be appropriate.
Mr. Saltback, one of the questions that FinCom had from their last meeting was, the CAC only used 25% of their allotted $25,000 as of April 1st, but we're asking for a $2,500 increase. Can you explain that, please?
I can, sharp eye. I expect no less from the Finance Committee. So I did reach out to the CAC. They actually request that payment in quarterly installments, and they had missed the second quarter. So when they recently requested the third, they requested the second along with it.
Thank you. Okay.
Article Nine, organizational restructuring. So this has come about, there's a lot of moving parts, I think, from a staffing perspective. It's been pretty, the past few years, I think, from municipal government in particular, have been pretty unique. That's been highlighted by even our auditor, Tony Roselli, who's come in and said, a lot of communities are kind of struggling with this and trying to find creative ways to keep their operations moving, using the existing personnel and resources that they have, but also, you know, ever tightening budgets and trying to find ways to make things work. So as part of that, we've seen a lot of kind of shifting pieces within our organization over the past couple of years. One thing that sticks out, though, is in our charter, we have a section that reads in part, and I'll move to the next slide, and I'll read it in its entirety, just in case people at home can't see it on the screen, so forgive me. I'll try to be quick. "The town manager, after consultation with the Board of Selectmen, may from time to time prepare and submit to the town meeting plans of organization or reorganization of town agencies. Whenever the town manager prepares such a plan, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen, the manager shall hold hearings on such proposal, giving notice by publication in the local newspaper of the date, time, and place of the public hearing and the scope of the proposal. Before any such plan shall become effective, the town manager shall provide that proposed organizational plan, which may be amended or revised as a result of information developed at the public hearing, be submitted to a session of the town meeting. The authority of the town meeting concerning the proposed organizational plan shall be limited to the approval or rejection of it. The town meeting shall not vote to amend or to alter the proposed plan." So some of the conversations we've had about this in the past is that by going through the annual budgeting process or checking those boxes, the Finance Committee public hearing is advertised. The conversations that we've had over the past several months about these roles in larger groups, smaller groups, public groups, we've talked about it several times over. And then ultimately, bringing it to the annual town meeting does satisfy the requirement in that the citizens have an opportunity to vote to fund or not fund those specific roles. So that's not the piece in question here. The reason that we're seeing the article come forward is at the request of select person Anderson, who had requested, I believe, at the last meeting or the one prior, that we carve out separately, just to highlight some of the changes in an act of added transparency. So I just want to stress that typically, this is satisfied. We're doing this as a little bit extra, and we wanted to highlight what some of those changes were. So with that said, I'd like to walk you through, I guess, in the best way possible, boiling this down to three changes that we're seeing here. So change one of three would be to delete the DPW director role and school maintenance director role. So Martin, who's the director of school maintenance, is retiring this summer. There was an opportunity, we approached by the schools, to see if there'd be interest in combining the DPW director and director of school maintenance role. There was a town-slash-school group, you know, sub-working group that met to talk about this at length for several meetings, and then it was brought back to the larger bodies and discussed. In doing this, it would also create a mid-management school maintenance supervisor and a mid-management DPW engineer supervisor, so effectively ensuring that there is always going to be a single-point person at the schools and a single-point person on the town side under the direction of that director of DPW and school maintenance. The total projected net change in cost here is $0, and people who are doing quick math at home might be wondering, how does that come into play? So it's not every day we can put a plan together that lets you pick up an additional employee with no extra cost. So we're taking in funding from the MS4 storm water permitting. It's a requirement that we have to go through, that we typically fund out of house. That'll go to, you know, an outside consultant, tie and bond, for example. What we're proposing is that that DPW engineer supervisor is going to be able to pick up a bulk of that work in-house in their role. So we're going to save by not having to fund that line as much for outside consulting fees, but instead funding an in-house employee. In addition, there are peer review fees that we also farm out. So anytime a development comes to town and is reviewed by Planning or Zoning Board, Conservation Commission, those plans, we also ship out to tie and bond. Tie and bond reviews them and then sends them back to us and kind of signs off on them. Rather than sending those fees outside of house to tie and bond, we'll be using it to help fund this DPW engineer supervisor, who will have the capability and ability to sign off on those plans on the town's behalf.
With these two things, what do you anticipate saving? What's the total dollar figure?
It's going to come out conservatively, out to the same, net zero. However, you know, I didn't want to come out and say you're going to make money on this, but based on projections that we've seen from what was used in past years, I do think you're probably going to end up taking in a little more than what you're paying out. But I didn't want to say that, have it not come true, and then have people knocking on my door.
I guess my question was, what have we spent on it in the, like, an average in the past few years?
Sure. So it usually hovers between $70,000 and $100,000.
Okay. Now, I know that the committee that worked this initially, some members of the town, some members of the school, should this pass at town meeting, it goes back to that committee for further discussion and figuring and such like that?
No.
Or is it a done deal?
Maybe if I call it, well, there's a next step, in so many words. We may be crossing a wire here. So once it's voted at town meeting, it would go into place. The committee would get back together, though, to work on an agreement. So I think a lot of what the, an agreement between the town and the school. So I think a lot of, yeah, hashing out the details. But the vote at town meeting would effectively give us the green light to move forward in that. There is a draft document that's been circulating as a kind of starting point structurally to highlight what those various, I guess, safeguards would be that we'd be putting in place. The biggest concern, I think, is from three perspectives. One is to make sure somebody's advocating for the town's needs. The other is to make sure somebody's advocating for the school's needs. And the third is to make sure that there's somebody advocating for the employee, so that they're not stuck in a, you know, a difficult situation, being torn between two organizations. So there will be some follow-up there.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
As a member of that committee, I feel like when we voted to approve this, I was under the impression that it was going to come back for discussion at, like, the Board of Selectmen level. And we would be discussing it, because I had concerns as a selectman that I didn't really want to bore school committee members or finance committee members with. And, you know, we didn't really discuss it as our own board before putting it on the warrant, and that's a little bit of a concern for me.
Okay, understood. Okay. Any other questions on this one?
So I would just like to follow up in selectwoman Anderson. I understand your concerns, but I think this might be the fourth selectman meeting where this topic has come up, and honestly, there's no better time than the present. So we can still discuss it, you know.
Right. But, and again, like, the other time it came up, it was with Finance Committee. And there are certain concerns that are really unique to the Board of Selectmen that I felt we should have talked about. You know, like, when it leaves subcommittee, it goes back to the committees. And school committee has, you know, by themselves discussed it, I know. But we never have, just as the Board of Selectmen, that, you know, just to iron out some of the details, some of the concerns that we might have with the Board, to go back before. the details, some of the concerns that we might have to go back before, you know, it really should be on the warrant.
We're meeting Thursday, right? Maybe we could discuss it on Thursday.
Can't hear you, Mrs. Lapointe.
Sorry. We're meeting Thursday, right? Perhaps we could discuss it Thursday prior to voting on each article.
Yeah, at 6:30 on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about that one? Mary, can you just make another? Already, she's good. Okay. The second change of three would be to delete the Director of Planning and Development role. And this would effectively go to two areas. So promoting current planning and land use coordinator to the planning and land use agent, and that move is union-supported. And I would note that in the departure of almost a year ago of Tracy Murphy, those duties have been carried out by Nicole Roberts, and she's been doing an excellent job. So it's also supported by planning and zoning boards. And then the second piece is taking the economic development duties and adding to the town manager scope. So in the same sense, over the past year, those duties haven't gone away. They've just drifted up into my office, and we've had some success there. It is pretty typical for that role to handle that specific duty. And so the projected net change in cost here, and one of the kind of more appealing aspects, is that there's going to be a savings to the budget of $40,000. And what we ran into was, when we did advertise for that role, we put it out twice. We received very minimal feedback. We interviewed some folks that we felt just wouldn't be the best fit. We wanted to wait and see what came back with the salary survey. And the salary survey, in so many words, said that that would be about a $90,000 role. And so where those duties have been taken care of over the past year, and we didn't really have $90,000 rolling around, we felt that this was the best move. Are there any questions about that?
Mr. Salzback, can you give us, say, three examples of what economic development duties are?
Sure. So I'd say the top three would be coordinating with the redevelopment authority. So we've seen a lot of success over the past year, for example, going through the Beach Street property, going through both the sale of the Tu family and the demo of, in construction of a park where the garage was. Also through the redevelopment authority, not only rehabbing old places, but showcasing new pieces of land. So a good example of that would be the Hillview property, where we've seen success over the past year, negotiating the sale of that property and also finding a private development, or excuse me, private developer, that was willing to pick up the million-plus cost of pulling in utilities in the road into the Hillview property. That was a big one from my office. And the, I think, a third example would be a lot of the cannabis components that we've seen floating around town that I actually took on when I got to town two years ago, traditionally was under the planning and development role. And under my leadership, we saw two recreation facilities open with a third coming down the road. So I think that's a good example of just, I think, business-positive type initiatives. The IGA, I'll give you a fourth, is another one. The Walgreens down at the other end is another one. Just those type of positive economic growth that we've seen throughout town, particularly in the past year.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I feel like that we don't have anybody there making sure the terms and conditions of permits are being adhered to. And, you know, that I personally see some instances in town where, once it gets through planning and development or conservation or whatever, you know, that's a very important role in that, I'm not sure it's fair to put on a town manager's office and say that, well, they're picking up the slack, when I'm not sure they really are in total. And we might be being penny-wise and pound foolish for thinking we're saving money, but in the long run, maybe not.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but in my mind, you know, following up on orders of conditions and such like that, I honestly can't tell you whose role it is, but it wouldn't be town manager's role. And I don't think it even would be, whether it's a director or a coordinator or agent, who does follow up on them.
Sure, great question. And I would share that concern, because I wouldn't want that in my office either. So that's actually fallen to Nicole, and she's done an excellent job. And I think, in fact, a good example would be the McDonald's, where they had a condition, when they put that in under Bush I, that they had to build a sidewalk. Nobody ever caught that in the office. Nicole caught it in this past year. So they're actually going to be picking up the expense of putting in a sidewalk so we can put the crosswalk back over there. So I share that concern. I do not believe it should be in my office. It should stay down in the planning department. And Nicole's been just absolutely excelling in that area.
Okay, so just planning, okay.
Any other questions about two out of three? All right. And then, three out of three would be the addition of a recreation coordinator. So this one has an asterisk, and I'm going to explain it. So the total projected net change in cost for this year, definitely next year and potential for the year after would be $0. And I say potential because it's presently grant-funded through the Robinson-Brothers Foundation. The total salary is $45,032. So for now, there is an immediate cost. But eventually, when the generosity of Robinson-Brothers wears out, there's an understanding that eventually it's going to have to stand on its own two feet. And the request that I had to them was that we make an attempt to, you know, give us a couple of years to figure things out, let the dust settle, figure out what the expenses are going to be at the amphitheater and at the Winchton Community Park, figure out what they can drive in terms of revenues while still making things affordable and family-friendly, but bringing in some income, and figure out realistically what that's going to cost. So I would stress that at this time, it is zero. I'm confident that we've put together a system so far that is going to drive enough revenue to justify the existence of that role. Tiffany's been doing an excellent job to date. And I would also highlight, even beyond that, the feedback that we've received from the community in terms of how supportive and happy they are to see additional recreational opportunities in Winchton. And you hear a lot of people complaining that, you know, oh, there's nothing to do. And I think a lot of that, A, there was always things to do. B, I think there's way more to do now, and people are really excited about the summer and what that is finally going to look like once things open. So I would just stress to people, keep an eye on that, stick with it. But at this time, there wouldn't be an additional cost.
Yeah, I think once we get a year's worth of events under our belt, we'll have a better sense of the potential and what type of events draw the people in and are more financially bringing money into the committee into the town and go from there. We can say something? Mrs. Anderson?
I was going to ask a question. So if Article nine passes, then all three of these changes will occur?
Yep. So as highlighted in the language, it's the authority of town meeting concerning the proposed organizational plan shall be limited to the approval or rejection of it. The town meeting shall not vote to amend or to alter the proposed plan. So that is my plan in its entirety. Rise or fall. Any other questions?
Just to follow up, Mrs. Anderson was asking about advertising and how we can get the community to know what's going on at the park. And until that electronic sign is up, maybe we can use the little one that we use for the voting and for town meeting, just, you know, put it up on a Thursday morning or a Wednesday afternoon, this weekend at blah, 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 until we can get the other one moving.
Great.
Wait, I know Mr. Crowder was looking for things to do, so.
Got to keep him busy. Any other questions about that? Okay. Article 10, the fiscal 24 general government budget. So you're looking for a total sum of $16,744,246 for the operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. So we've been reviewing that collectively as a group for the past six weeks or so. Once again, I just want to reiterate my appreciation for the grace that the various boards and committees have displayed as we worked to onboard a new town accountant. And we have some green members of our finance team in the work that we've all been doing together. So I appreciate your patience. I know it was bumpy at a couple of spots, but we got there. So does anybody have any questions about Article 10?
I have two. One of the ones was vet services. We noticed that only 20.8% of their 200, they had $245,000 left, but it was decreased by 43.9% this year. Can you just give us a little heads up as to why?
Absolutely. So that line in particular is one that I've been watching for the past two years, just for the sake of any increases or dips. And the reason being is that the past two years have been slightly volatile, or volatile. We have a not-so-new veterans' agent at this point, who's been putting in a huge effort over the past two years to work with the state to try to clean up our roles. So a lot of the books that we had for veterans in town were not terribly accurate. There were things that were being authorized that maybe shouldn't have been authorized. And so as part of that cleanup process, we did see a reduction. Aside from that cleanup process, it's been trending downward for some time. And so what we found is that that line was funded excessively. So we did cut into it a little bit last year, and then I wanted to take some more time to get more data. We worked in conjunction with our veterans' agent to make sure, you know, within 100% certainty that we'd have enough resources to fund our veterans. So we did put forth a conservative number, but even so, putting forth a conservative number, we managed to turn a significant amount back to help offset some of the increasing costs in the general operating budget.
Good, thank you. Was there any other questions on that? That was one of the questions that the Finance Committee had. The other question is OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. The boss and the finance adopted and amended a policy January 24, 2022, where it says, "A separate trust fund shall be established to provide a reserve fund for future retire post-employment benefits." The town manager shall include the annual general operating budget and allocation to the OPEB. The allocation shall be 5% of the cost of health insurance in any given year. This year would be $118,555. It's not a line item budget. Can you tell us why?
Sure. And I've been looking forward to the slap on the wrist from the Finance Committee. So we ran into this last year as well. When the policy was drafted, I think the intent between different parties wasn't abundantly clear. And so what we've been doing is, rather than funding it as a line item in the annual operating budget, we've been committed to funding it once free cash is certified in the following fall. And so we have done that for the past two years. Would be my recommendation to continue doing that. And in addition, I would also say it would be my recommendation, maybe just to revisit and revise that policy to formalize that understanding, just to make sure the community continues to follow through on that. OPEB is an area that traditionally wasn't funded or funded regularly. We did start funding it regularly once I got into town. But I think the important piece is, as the budget continues to get tighter, I think holding yourself to a standard where you're funding that in budget is exceedingly difficult. But once you see your free cash roll through in the fall, before you cover any other expense, you should be pulling from that free cash and funding that OPEB obligation. So that would be my recommendation.
And it might be to take number four and move it to number two, where we talk about stabilization should be 10% of free cash. The retirement benefit should be 10% of free cash, and OPEB should be 5% of free cash. I don't think we funded it to those degrees yet. We're getting close, but we haven't met it. And that one could come back to bite us, because unfortunately, people are retiring and we will owe them.
I agree with that. And it's, you know, to the town's credit, you've all been making really good progress on that and funding those stabilization accounts. It was something that was called out in our credit rating upgrade. So I would just say, you know, stick with it. It takes a lot of financial discipline to tuck that money away, but you'll be better off for it in the long run.
Thank you.
Could you tell us what the current balance is in free cash?
Once all of these, so it's at about 1.3. Once all of these are, go through, though, or if they all go through, you'd be hovering a little over $200,000 with the snow and ice hit.
Point three.
Yeah.
Article 11, the fiscal 24 Water Enterprise Budget. So it's to appropriate the sum of $1,4,542, with the understanding that there will be $193,000 roughly set aside for indirect costs. And once again, just want to, you know, tip my cap to the boards and committees, because this is, for the first time in a long time, projecting retained earnings rather than a deficit. Modest, but still trending in the right direction. So good work. Any questions on that one?
Can I ask, are we ever going to get an audit of the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund?
Yep. So that's the request for this upcoming year, when we went out for auditing services, that the single audit is going to be for water or wastewater. Take your pick. For wastewater, same thing, budgeted number of $1,447,000, with the difference being for this one versus water is that you have betterment revenues to lean on as well, and the amount of $445,000, and that you'd have indirect costs and the amount of about $175,000, give or take. But same thing for wastewater, you are in the black for the first time in a long time. So that's a significant accomplishment.
Mr. Salzback, the growing facility that is looking to go into Hillview, do we have a timeframe roughly when that would be online?
So it depends on how quickly they can get through the planning board. And so I think it's their hope that if they can do that through the summer and potentially start a little bit of site work before the frost sets, and then they could come out hard in the spring and get a foundation in the ground.
Because that will obviously have an effect on the water usage.
Yes.
In the sewer.
Yep, that's a component. So the industry has had a big push on trying to recycle water and be a little more, I guess, watchful of how they're using resources, but I think there'd still be an increase there. Is it, Brian, is there sewer out that way too, or is it just water? No sewer? Yep. So it would be just water?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Salzback, could I ask that you put a tickler on the calendar for Town Manager, maybe August, to meet with the Audit Committee on some of these issues? Because I know the last year particularly, we were late getting some of those things. And I think maybe the communication is lacking.
We'll put a reminder. I'll even draft an email and set it to send to Tony Roselli on August 1, to give him a nudge and remind him.
That would be great. Thank you.
Article 13, the Transfer Station Enterprise Budget. So this one is a significantly smaller budget, $242,337, with indirect costs just under $14,000. This enterprise fund has traditionally been a little more healthy than water and sewer. We're not carrying a ton of retained earnings, but there is some there. Article 14, coming back around now to the fiscal 24 Cable Public Access Enterprise Budget. So once again, if you form this enterprise fund, this vote will be funding that fund in the amount of $113,300, which is representative of the amount of resources coming in from the Comcast cable agreement. Article 15 is the school budget. So you're looking at about $16,983,226, just under $17 million. Net school spending for the upcoming year is a little over $20 million. One piece that you see a departure from here is that rather than the entire override going to the schools in a partnership and negotiation, they're receiving $50,000 of that. It's still representative of about an 18% increase in the size of the school budget over the last three years. So they're in a good spot. But we have committed in future years to continuing to review that override, keep an eye on trends, and see if the, I guess, net school spending piece over the next three or four years continues to drive the cost of schooling far beyond the cost of town government operations. Because it hits a certain point where the only place you can pull additional money from is through cuts on the town side. So just something to be mindful of.
And we can hope the state does a little digging and realizes that the rural communities can't sustain this increase constantly without some help.
It's certainly well-intentioned, but it's putting us in a difficult situation.
Yeah, and that goes back to the meeting we had some months ago with Representative Zlotnik.
Yeah.
Representative Whip and Senator Comerford. The best they could offer to us is that they're going to extend the runway for us.
They're going to talk about it.
They're not going to, you know, give us any money, but they'll give us a longer time to come up with the money, which is going to, you know, in the long run.
Which isn't going to help much.
Not really. But they can extend the runway for us, there, Dr. Ward.
There'll be no plane on that runway, but.
No.
Article 16, fiscal 24 Monty Tech Assessment. We did see that decrease a little bit to $706,000. Article 16, Fiscal 24 Money Tech Assessment. We did see that decrease a little bit to $706,000.
Can I just state that although we're educating fewer children there, so it's not really less money, but.
Sure.
Because fewer, they're taking fewer of our kids.
Article 17, so as past practice for the past couple of years, we've broken up the capital plan by funding source, and that seems to have had some success. So, we're going to continue doing it. So, Article 17 covers free cash in the amount of $224,750, as you can see on the next slide. That covers five separate items. We've covered the capital plan already several times over. I don't know if anybody would like to go through it line by line one more time, if anybody has questions.
Not per se. And I know, you know, 18, 19, you know, the additional ones, breaking them out by funding source. But I think you and I had talked, and I suggested that for a separate handout at town meeting, list an item, and then list where all the different funding sources are for that one item. So, we have it by method, and then we have it by item. I think that would be helpful.
We'll distribute the colorized full sheet capital plan, so people can really kind of look and see how all those numbers interact.
Can I ask a question, just because we have Mr. Crotto here? I've had several complaints from some residents saying that there was too much salt used on their road, and it's hurting their dogs' paws or whatever. And so, the salt brine system, would that alleviate that situation?
So, with the salt brine, it minimizes the amount of rock salt that we have to put down, because it's broken down into a solution. So, it's liquefied, so there is less salt going out. So, it should reduce our salt usage. But there's a caveat to that, because it depends on what the weather event is, to whether it can support the liquid, or if that liquid's going to come back around and freeze on us, and we shouldn't use it. So, each storm is different, and it has to be watched. But it will 100% reduce the amount of salt, so you don't have as much rock salt being used, yes.
Overall?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would say, Brian, a lot of the weather events you saw this year probably would have been helped by this, because it was straddling the line between freezing and not freezing, and that's why we got a lot of ice. Is that accurate?
That's 100% accurate. So, salt brine's kind of volatile, because it's not good in the real cold, cold, but there's additives that we can add to it. But we haven't really seen the real cold weather like we have in past years. So, it's more of the hovering of the 25 to 33 degrees. That's perfect for these conditions, as long as we're not getting rain with it. Then, we can proceed with it.
Can I ask a question? Is that what they did? Like, I know that they did something with the liquid, like on 190 this year. That's the same thing? That's what we're going to do?
That's, yeah, it's the same thing. So, it's put down the day prior, or can even put down two days prior. There's an additive that we're looking to put into it. So, if we were going to get a snow event that was going to be about half an inch to an inch, we won't even have to treat this. This will melt as it's falling. So, it's a lot safer, but it's more about conserving on products, because we don't want to put down as much salt, because it is affecting the environment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if people maybe would want to just call out a specific project, if they see one as we roll through, that might be a good way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Article 18, five-year borrowing. So, recommending the sum of $785,000 roughly for the following items. Are there any questions on any of those four?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Yeah. Could you explain to me what exactly they're going to do with that barn exterior down there at the park?
Sure. Great question. So, there's about a $4 million investment in an amphitheater down there. And what seems to be a pretty glaring oversight, in my opinion, is a dilapidated barn that you have to drive by to get to this new amphitheater. And so, we have applied to the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation to get some additional resources. This is the town's portion. And what we're aiming to do is secure that structure. And it's, I think, what we've been doing with a lot of structures in town, where we don't necessarily have the money to fix them all 100% right now, but you want to stop them from, you know, backsliding. And so, this will preserve the exterior. It will get the envelope weather-tight again, so you're not going to have water rolling in, rotting some of the major beams. And it will protect the property until someday down the road, whether it be next year or 10 years from now, if the town decides they want to make an investment and do something on the inside of that, and restore it and use it again for some purpose, that that building will still be there in better condition.
And so, the windows will still be boarded up after this?
Ah, no, they will not be. Yep. So, it'll look completely normal from the outside.
Okay.
Yeah. But the interior is going to be just as haunted and spooky as it presently is.
I think it's beautiful. I love that building.
Well, you have rubber windows, so when the rocks hit it, they bounce off.
Yeah. Well, the other.
Plexiglass.
The benefit of having the amphitheater down there, among many other benefits, is that there's going to be a security system down there, and there are cameras down there. So, that's going to be a big change. And hopefully, that word gets throughout the community, because I know, I don't want to say, I don't want to blame it on the youths, but if I had to guess, somebody's down there spray painting or throwing rocks from occasion. So, just get the word out. There are cameras down there now, and they tie into the police station, so.
Good. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Article 19. So, this one is specific to the transfer station. It is a request to borrow $223,411 for funding a roll-off truck, the annual expense of which, over a 10-year stretch, we anticipate to be about $24,000. The purpose of this particular project is, we're currently outsourcing that task, and the cost is expected to escalate pretty significantly over the next couple of years. And so, this is a preemptive measure to make an upfront investment that's going to save that enterprise account a significant amount of funds over the next several years.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
So, Article 19 and Article 20, are those both 10-year loans?
Article 20 is a five-year.
Slide.
Yeah. I was going to ask that also. I mean, nowhere in the Article 19 does it say it's a 10-year bond or 10-year.
We could highlight that somewhere.
Yeah. Like Article 18, we say it's a five-year borrowing.
Yep. The annual amount is reflective of it.
Of the 10-year. Okay.
But we can highlight it, I think, a little bit better.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I think for consistency, where for the Article 18, we have it broken down into annual payments. And what that is going to be, we tell them exactly. It's a five-year. But for these, we don't tell the public how long. And we don't have the annual payment. Well, we don't have what the total cost is for annual payments. I mean, obviously, the annual payments have interest, so that Article 18 is about $40,000 or $50,000 in interest that we don't see. And the Articles 19 and 20 don't break that down as much. So, it's sort of like 18 is, here's all the information, but we're not giving you all the information for the next two.
Sure.
Just a perception.
Understood. So, I'll try to find some way to tweak that to make it a little more clear.
Mr. Saltback?
19 is 10, and 20 would be 5.
19 and 20 are, what is a 10-year loan for 19?
Everything is 5. 19 is a 10. So, I'll actually note, the cover sheet, at one point, I had updated it, but it looks like five years carried over. It should be 10-year. So, that's going to get edited. So, it is actually called out on the cover sheet.
Okay.
The length of the borrowing term. But we can find, I mean, and this is just the town meeting presentation, but we can find a way to maybe work it in where, and let me just flip real quick to the.
Even if you just put it in where you've asterisked and said, if you just put it right at the bottom there in that fine print.
Yeah.
Right.
In brackets, five years, 10 years, it would tell us what it is.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
For a couple of years, I think the previous town manager had us going with leases. And we seem to have dropped that policy. Can you explain to me why?
It depends on the equipment. So, we do have a couple leases that we're still paying down. A lot of them aren't true leases, in the sense that we return the equipment after it. A lot of them are actually leased to owns. The reason being, you know, I can't jump in Keith's mind, but if I had to guess, it may have had something to do with the interest rates at that particular time. But interest rates are still pretty strong coming out of COVID. They're going up quicker. But we're still in a good spot. That's the only thing I could think of why he reasoned to do that. It's not, honestly, it's not typical. I've seen a lot of communities try to get away from that process.
Try to get away from the leasing?
The leasing, yeah.
I can't remember why he talked me into it.
I could, I can maybe give him, I might shoot him a text and just ask if you're curious.
Yeah. That's a good.
Because I feel like the police cruisers were always done on a lease.
But you're right. It's that lease to own.
Right.
Kind of thing.
So, it's like functionally, it's the same. And I don't quite understand why, what the benefit may have been in that moment in 2020. But I could maybe shoot him an email or something and see.
Like leasing a vehicle or whatever, which I've never done. So, yeah. Okay. Good point. So, 19 is a 10-year. Article 20, we're back to 5.
Yep. Correct. So, this is just for a water service truck, just under $100,000. And I will note also that any article requiring free cash is a majority vote. Any article by law requiring a borrowing is two-thirds. So, just keep note of that.
Thank you.
And now, I need to ask another question.
Yes.
The Article 20, with the amount of the service truck, has that been, like, deducted in the Water Enterprise article?
Yep. So, we carry debt service lines in the general operating budget. We carry debt service lines in the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds in the same way. And so, that number has been rolled into the debt schedule for Water and Wastewater.
So, the retained earnings would include this 26, or 20,700?
Yeah. So, the projected cost for running the water plant next year takes that figure into account.
Okay. Thank you.
Article 21, grants other sources. So, that's the 136 or so from the 911 grant for police cruisers. Pretty typical. Article 22, paving plans. This one, we're going to dig into a little bit more. We already have a couple of times, but just if anybody's watching at home, yep.
Can you just back up, because something just came to me. 911 grant. About three years ago, they talked about adding another dispatcher during the busy times. I think it's like 5 to 8, or 5 to 9, and on weekends. But that's never happened. And that would be the use of this 911 grant fund. Maybe sometime you could just ask the police chief where that situation is and get back to us.
Sure. We did add a half of a dispatcher last year in part of the budget. And I think the long-term intent is, when funds allow, to grow that into a full-time employee. Then, I think that part of the benefit for the 911 grant is, we have the regional collaboration with the town of Royalston. We provide services for them, and I think that, in part, justifies why we get what we get back from the state. So, and this is a long answer, but it's my understanding in conversations with now-retired Chief Walsh, but also Chief Waltski, that the intent is to try to look for further opportunities for regionalization that would grow that number, and then help justify funding that full-time employee down the road.
If you can find, if you can find the employees, because they're few and far between.
That is also a struggle. Yes. Okay. Article 22. So, the paving plan is a million-dollar paving plan, and we're planning on funding it using two sources. So, the first is free cash in the amount of $550,000. In the absence of Mr. Kane, I will, on his behalf, ask the question that I know he would ask if he were here. And that is, that $550,000 is based off of two sources. One of them is cannabis revenue, and the other one is the May-Barty road remediation. And so, the question that Mr. Kane has asked historically is, well, isn't that built in, intended to, already intended to fund the Fiscal 23 budget that we're currently in? And the answer to that is yes, in part. And so, a conservative amount of those two funding sources do contribute to projected revenue for the fiscal year we're presently in. What I'm recommending is using the funds that have come in, projected above and beyond that amount, that we are going to collect and roll into free cash next year to fund road paving. So, one of them, the May-Barty, it's road remediation. It was intended for that purpose. Cannabis, it's, you know, as always, the recommendation to use that for some type of capital improvement whenever possible. And at least, I don't know what you all hear from people in town, but I hear a lot about the state of our roads. So, it seemed like a good initiative. The Capital Planning Committee was very much in support of it. And so, that free cash, when I say we're going to be drawn down to just over $200,000, part of that is from this hit of free cash. But you're going to get almost instantly replenished when it comes through and get certified next fall. So, it's only temporary. The other piece of that, of that million is $450,000. So, we're recommending a borrowing for that in the amount of five years. And so, the way we're proposing that be funded, it'd be roughly a $90,000 expense annually for that debt over the next five years. And we're proposing using the additional cannabis funds that come in over that next five-year period to pay down that $450,000 expense. So, we're projecting, you know, well over $250,000, $300,000, extremely conservatively for cannabis in that time period. And within that five-year timeframe, you should see a third retail facility open as well. So, you're not hamstringing yourself there. You'll very, you'll be able to very comfortably make that payment. But that's the recommendation for that piece. Any questions?
Yeah. Madam Chair?
This is something.
I don't think we've ever borrowed to pave roads before. That concerns me.
Sure. So, and it's a great question. Part of the reasoning is that roads degrade at a rate faster than the cost of interest will catch up to you. And so, what that means basically is, if you were to try to save for five years to repair that same road, it's going to cost you more to repair that road than it would be to pay the interest on borrowing for it.
But I felt like in the past, we've always had, like, a revolving plan of what we were going to pave, and we took the state money and some of our money and used that.
Yep. We're still doing that. So, we're going to use Chapter 90 funds. And in total with this, it's going to get us to about $1,500,000. What we're trying to do is get ahead, because the problem is, is that the roads are degrading at a rate faster than you're repairing them. And so, it's costing you, if you let a road get past a certain point, and you have to do, rather than like a mill and overlay, and you have to do a full-depth reconstruction, it's going to cost you twice as much to do it. So, if you can get some of these resources upfront to save these roads from getting to that point, you're going to save money in the long run.
But I see it as, you're borrowing for five years for a road that's only going to last three. You know, so then you still owe money on a road that you're going to redo again.
It would last more than three, but I get your point. But I think that the biggest concern is, when you all did that road scan a while back, and I don't know what it came, it was like 65 million or so. I hear the number float around all the time.
Some crazy number.
You'll never catch up to that. But at the rate your roads are backsliding, if you don't start making some upfront investments in them, you're going to hit a kind of crisis point on your roads, where they're all going to be at that failure point all at the same time. And so, this is to try to keep you from bottoming out.
Okay. So, what does that mean? What roads?
Mr. Crotto.
So, right now, I'm putting together the plan, the paving bid just closed last Thursday. The paving numbers came back very, very competitive, probably better than what I expected. Mass thought, if you take just the Chapter 90 money, which you receive, which is about $470,000, they, if you did that formula out with 140 miles of road that we have, you would pave each road every 60 years, which we all know asphalt.
Sorry. Sixty-six-zero?
Sixty-six-zero. That's the way the math works out. So, we all know that doesn't work, because we don't get more than 25 or 30 years out of a road. Yeah, we got lucky with Central Street and some of the older roads, because it was the older asphalt. But with the changes in times, they've now used recycled products and so on and so forth, and it doesn't last. So, if you do a full-depth reclamation, and then you do a, you do a top on it, you're going to get 20 to 25 years out of that road. So, if you borrow 450, you're going to get 20 to 25 years. My plan this year, and I'm putting the other list, which I'm going to put in front of the Board of Slockman, is to do about 12 roads. A bunch, a bunch of the roads is going to be a full-depth reclamation, because the roads are beyond repair, and it doesn't make sense to do a leveler and overlay. But you will see that on some of the quieter roads. I'm going to propose to do a leveler and an overlay. I'm hoping in the next few weeks to get the presentation together. I'm hoping in the next few weeks to get the presentation together for the board because I didn't want to do the presentation prior and I'm a little hesitant to do it before town meeting, not knowing what we're going to have for funding and saying that we, we're going to do these roads and then the town decides not to fund the, the million dollars and now all we have for paving is four hundred and seventy. So I don't want to put myself or the town manager or the Board of Slockman in the position to say, well, we had a plan together for one point five million, now we have to take, you know, five hundred thousand of that and make a plan. So that's, that's my hesitation. Have we been working towards putting a plan together? Absolutely. I did make a comment to the Chair the other day that when I do put the plan together, depending on how this vote goes, I'm probably going to put a two-year plan together because we can better address how we're going to go about doing it because we may be better off doing a bunch of binder this year to get some roads in drivable condition because a, a lot of these roads aren't even, aren't even drivable. My staff's not able to patch them because there's nothing left to patch. So we're going to, I want to see how the town meeting shakes out before I a hundred percent put my plan out there. But it's, it's, it's a challenge because the, the roads in Winchton aren't getting any better. Yeah, we got an extra three hundred and seventy thousand from the state last year, which made a difference. But we, we got a long way ahead of us and we just don't have the, the, the resources for it. Senator Commerford testified in, 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 in front of the Senate and asked and pleaded with them to get the Western Mass cities and towns extra money. Whether or not that passes, I don't know, but if it does, that would be appreciated because we can do even more then. But there's just, there's, there's no guarantees.
Okay, thank you.
And that's part of the conversation, you know, I'm, I'm the board representative on the Capital Planning Committee. When Brian Justin brought this before the committee, roads, if, if you talk to people in town, it's roads, those are the problems, what about, what about the roads? So we support this. It's a builder upfront investment, but we think it's well worth it to get ahead of the game.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I get, and, and you know, I probably live on one of the worst roads, so believe me, I know.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question on the cabinet, uh, camitous revenue. Do you have a breakdown of how the funds or where the revenue comes from, from the state? Is it based on mass income or is it partly from New Hampshire also?
It, all, all sales. So all sales that go through a particular recreational facility, we receive three percent of whatever their total sales are.
Oh, so it's state, just the state and then we get a percentage of what the state?
Based on our, our specific location. So for example, if the Bud Barn does twenty million in sales, the town of Winchton gets three percent of that.
So it's the facilities within Winchton then?
Just the facilities here.
Yes.
In Winchton.
But the, the revenue, so some of the revenues might come, I mean, from the people from New Hampshire coming.
If they come to Winchton to buy, yeah.
They buy in Winchton, we get it.
Yeah, so do you have a breakout of, you know, by state?
No.
Oh, no, yeah, they wouldn't release that data.
No.
So if New Hampshire passes the cannabis revenues, then that could affect the revenue here.
Depending where they put them.
Yeah, so.
I'm sure Jeffrey would probably.
Yeah, that's on the horizon and as we had, the conversations we've had various times about the projected income that the town could, you know, reasonably expect, we, we know that New Hampshire's on the, on the horizon. So we're being very conservative for the next year or so, year or two as to what we project and what we, you know, use that money for, recognizing that we don't know what's going to happen beyond a certain period of time.
Right. So I'm, I'm in favor of having the roads paved, I'm all in favor of that. I'm just afraid that the, the, the money that we project to get in the following years, it's not going to be there. That, that's what my concern is.
But this was a one-time.
Five years.
No, I'm, I'm looking at, well, and also Article, you know, twenty-two. That five hundred fifty thousand would be replenished from somebody at Candace.
Yeah, but twenty-three is a five-year borrowing, so about ninety thousand annually.
Yeah, it would be about ninety thousand a year.
Okay.
So conservatively, we're anticipating two, about two hundred fifty thousand. That, that number takes into account the expectation that New Hampshire is going to legalize. Also the understanding that even once they, they legalize it, it's going to take them about a year to figure out how to, how to allow those businesses to operate and then probably about another year for businesses to actually open and follow the same pattern we saw in the Commonwealth. But we are taking into account, so if New Hampshire does open, I don't anticipate that two hundred fifty to evaporate to zero. You know, without knowing what it's going to be, maybe it will cut it in half. But by the time they do open, we'll have a third business in place that we're not even taking into account the revenue from them. So we're, we're pretty well cushioned.
Okay, thank you.
Article twenty-four, a leaf loader, so that one we're proposing paying out of the perpetual care account for the cemetery, it's twelve thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Article twenty-five cemetery expansion, we're also proposing paying out of cemetery perpetual care. And we just wanted to stress on this one, because it came up in a previous meeting, that this is proposing the extension of a town cemetery on existing town-owned land. So we're not looking to purchase any additional land, it's existing resources we have. But we're looking to expand and, and this is, I, I roughed this together, so excuse me, this was an in-house rendering. But trying to give you an idea visually of, of what's being proposed. So there's a section of the existing, adjacent to the existing DPW yard where that's going to be made into effectively, you know, park green space with some bordering hedges and trees to better delineate between the DPW and that space and allowing that a few years to kind of establish itself. So it's not just, you know, folks being in turn there, you know, immediately once it puts in, I think, to give it an opportunity for people to reframe it in their mind as a green space and a, you know, a, a park space and not a yard. The back portion that you can see, that existing road, if you kind of drive up into the woods up on the hill there, we're talking about pushing back that tree line and extending, you know, up, up to about half or a little bit less of the space back there. So the intent here is that there's enough space projected to carry us through for, for the next couple of years or so, depending on what happens. But we don't want to wait until we're out of space. And so that's the intent here is we're trying, trying to be forward-thinking and trying to plan. So it's not going to go to waste, that, that land's going to be there and when you need it, you'll have it. And I would say from here, you know, if that buys you some more time, there'd probably be value in doing a, a larger scale look in terms of projecting the numbers and the, the rate at which you see those spaces fill up and talking about future expanses or expansions or potential land purchase, but like further down the road. This will buy you some time.
Madam Chair, can I just ask one question?
Yes.
That, the second part of the green, isn't that like a huge drop-off in that area?
It is. Yep.
How can you, we, you know, build it up or?
So, and Brian can speak to it a little bit more, but it is going to be a little bit of an engineering feat. My assumption would be the road would have a bit of a switchback to bring you down the hill. And then it, once you get down there, it flattens out for, for a while pretty considerably. It's a big drop, yeah.
Okay.
So if you look at the existing DPW yard, which we're talking about where we store the materials now, there's a pretty big banking of material that goes around the loop. Well, that, that material that's there is going to be moved up behind the old cemetery to bring the grade up, to take some of that out, to take away some of that steepness. But the town manager is right, once you get down in that, that wooded area, it's pretty flat. So I probably wouldn't put the road in just the way the town manager drew that nice picture. But we would come off of both, both sides with, with a rope, with a road in. It's, it's less steep, that's the way it's going to be logged with, with accesses. So if we take the existing material we have now at the DPW yard, we put it there and then we have some additional materials down the landfill from the Ingleside project, we're hoping to bring the grade up a, a, a little bit to, to take away, because you're a hundred percent right, there, there's quite the banking right there.
You could terrace it also, couldn't you?
Yeah, that, it's kind of, it's going to be terrace, I'm just looking to take some of it out.
Sure, yeah, think about a very nice terrace, but fill it in as much as you can, yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Article twenty-six, so this one might be familiar to you and we have some guests with us this evening if you'd, if you'd like to join us. So this came up at last year's annual town meeting. It was an effort to amend Chapter nine of the zoning bylaws entitled Signs, something we've talked about extensively over the past two years. And so handed out at the table this evening, I believe there's some upfront, if anybody wants to follow along.
This is really Article twenty-six.
We do have a breakdown of that document. And we have Chair Corbussero and Nicole Roberts from Planning and Development with us this evening to help walk us through this document.
Good evening, everyone.
This one.
So Article nine, sign bylaw, actually.
Sorry, is everybody where you need to be?
Well, it was Article nine last fall. Is that where the nine comes in?
Yes, yeah, Chapter nine.
Well, this says Article nine.
Oh, oh, yeah, yes, yes, so we need to change that. So now it's Article ten, good catch.
Chapter nine of the bylaw.
Right.
Strong start, but it is Chapter nine, Chapter nine of the bylaws.
So the changes made, we did have a public hearing at the last planning board meeting and the changes that were made, there was just a couple of additions and a couple of things that were moved around. So changes made, it was nine point one point seven. We took from the old bylaw and we added it into the new to preserve the character of community while allowing all residents and businesses their constitutional right to freedom of speech. So we added that back in. Section nine point six, number four and number five were removed under the monument sign section and they were put under the illumination section, saying that electronic message or display must be a continuous stream of light, meaning non-flashing. And the electronic message boards, electronic message or display signs may constitute up to fifty percent of the total square feet of a freestanding sign face incorporated into design of the freestanding signage and may be double-faced. So just last year, right now, according to our sign bylaw, electronic signs are not allowed. In different ZBA hearings, both the Fire Department, the American Legion, and just recently the Winchton Community Park, they did get special permits for signage that were electronic signs. And we feel it's the new wave of the future. We feel that it's a good way to tell people what's going on, when it's happening, instead of having that A-frame sign or instead of having a banner, or instead of relying on social media and Facebook for your whole presentation. So we feel it's very important to allow electronic signs here in town to know what's going on and not just simply for the fact of, just for that particular event. I mean, they would also advertise different events like Fall Fest or voting or flu shots or COVID, you know, if there wasn't any events going on at that time. So it's really a dual purpose to kind of get the word out there for anything going on in Winchton. So we feel that that is, you know, again, an important aspect. Section nine point nine permitted accessory signs, A-frame or sidewalk signs. There's special permit in all districts except for PD, so except for your downtown areas. You know, allowing business owners to put A-frame signs out with specials or advertising that they're open or, you know, different open houses that they may be having. Section nine point nine point two permanent principal signs. And section L, we allowed, we added electronic signs to this note. And all the electronic signs are by special permit. And the reason for that is so we can control what they look like, where they are, how they're going to be presented, what they're going to be, you know, held up with, whether it be granite posts, you know, plastic columns. And that way we have control over, over what's coming into town to make sure it's adequate for the area that it's in. Existing Article nine versus proposed, Article nine, I'm doing bunny ears on that one. So currently, the Zoning Board of Appeals is the granting authority for signs. In the new bylaw, the planning board is the granting authority. We feel this makes a lot of sense as the planning board oversees a lot of large projects and those large projects typically come with signs. So we feel it's a win-win, they're presenting everything in to the planning board and the planning board's looking at the project as a whole rather than going before the ZBA if they need a variance for a sign, like the planning board does that aspect of it. Electronic signs were not permitted in any zones, we just talked about that, we did add electronic signs to the bylaw. Sign types permitted were difficult to read and understand. Basically, it was just language in our existing bylaw, which you had to go back to it and kind of like, oh, is that me? You know, am I a wall sign, am I a banner sign, what am I? And with this new bylaw, it shows, you know, there's great pictures and graphics that shows, you know, what's a wall sign? What's a, what's a mural, what's a A-frame sign? And it just shows you what it is if you want to, you know, put it up and also gives you the specifications for, you know, what sizes are allowed, where it's allowed. And it refers you back to it if, whether or not you need a special permit or if it's just done by right. I'm calling them orange electronic message board signs, Brian probably has a different, like, so take for instance, the orange signs that you see, you know, out by, you know, on Spring Street and everything. Technically, according to our sign bylaw currently, they're not allowed. You'd need a special permit. So under the new bylaw, that, you would be able to put them up, no matter what, you know? I mean, granted, it does happen because there are things that we need to portray that, you know, we can't wait for a planning board meeting or a zoning board meeting to get permission to do. But under the nine point ten D exempt signs, that would be considered like a governmental sign, something that needs to be portrayed to the public or advertising something going on within the town.
Sorry, that was nine point ten?
Nine point ten D under exempt signs.
All right, thank you.
And then also, under the existing bylaw, if the sign was not listed, it was not permitted. And we added nine point one two, the planning board reserves the right by special permit at its discretion to waive or modify any requirements in Article nine. As we know, people are coming up with new creative ways to advertise. And if it is not in our bylaw and the planning, and they want to apply to the planning board and the planning board feels that it does fit in with the neighborhood, it does, you know, it's in keeping with the sign bylaws, they do have the right to waive that and potentially approve a sign, even if it is not listed. So one thing I am going to, and I, and I called Mike and I told him I was going to talk about him tonight. One thing I am going to use a example of is Appleberry Fabrics. Have you all been by Appleberry Fabrics downtown? You see they painted the storefront a beautiful robin's egg blue and they have this little tiny sign. And it, I mean, it really does not fit the outside of the building, but it's the only thing that is allowed given what the current sign bylaws state. So with that being said, a wall sign, that's what it is, shall not exceed eight square feet in sign face area, that's the current law. Under the new, if it does pass, they'll be able to extend horizontally across their storefront to a maximum of eighty percent of their storefront. So that will give it a really, you know, nice abundant sign to say, hey, look, we're a business in downtown, you know, come visit us. So the length maximum of, well, eighty percent, but maximum forty feet, again, we're talking about PD and a maximum of three feet in the, in the PD zoning district. So again, forty feet long, three feet tall, I mean, that would be a beautiful sign across the front of that building and it would fit it nicely. So just as an example, and then they wanted to do an awning, but way back when, when they first moved in, they reached out to me and said, you know, we'd really love to have a beautiful awning over our storefront. And of course, awnings weren't listed in our current sign bylaws, therefore, it's not allowed. But under the new bylaw, it would be allowed. Maximum of eight feet clearance above the sidewalk, so it's certainly, we don't have a lot of eight-foot tall people walking around Winchton. And, you know, just different requirements and, you know, again, and that would, that would dress it up and that would look nice and it is allowed. So I just think it's a great bylaw and it's, again, granted, it's many, many pages from what the other was, but it's easy to read. You know, people can see the pictures or if they're thinking, oh, I should put that sign up rather than the one that I was proposing, you know, just give some different ideas to kind of beautify Winchton and make it, you know, look nice downtown. So that's my, that's my take on things.
Thank you.
And just one more change that we made, just to the signs that I did not put in the PowerPoint because again, it, I completely forgot about, special event signs and street banners are permitted for home occupations, churches and schools and are also permitted. Special event signs and street banners are permitted for home occupations, churches and schools and are also permitted by special permit. And again, you know, the planning board's going to oversee a lot of these signs and just if it's by special permit, they're going to have different provisions. Even like wall murals as a one more example, and then I'll let you guys get back to your meeting. Wall murals, just making sure, like, if you're going to, you know, put a mural on the side of a building, yes, you need a special permit. But in that special permit, it's going to say, you must maintain it in a certain way, like if the paint chips or if it fades, you have to, you know, repaint it or you have to make sure that it stays secure to the building, if it's affixed to the side of the building. Like, there'll be different provisions to not have it abandoned and not have it look like, you know, yeah, it was done 10 years ago and now it looks terrible. You know, so that way it keeps people on their toes and it keeps Winchita looking nice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Could I just ask, I'm just curious, because years ago, there used to be awnings on those buildings and, and so I find it weird that, that they're not permitted under our current bylaws.
What, the awnings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. And I don't know when they were put up, I have no idea, but you have that small section of awnings.
I vaguely remember them getting torn up little by little and coming down. You know, it was nice with awnings.
Yeah, and you're right, they do look nice. And, you know, this sign bylaw would bring them back. And, you know, Appleberry had visions of this beautiful little awning over her fabric shop and she couldn't do it, you know? So they would be very happy if this passed too. Unfortunately, they're not Winchita residents, but he said that he would come to the meeting just to support the sign bylaw if nothing else.
Just a couple of things, I'm noticing under prohibited temporary signs, you can have no, the air-activated graphics, the little dancing guy there.
Yes, I believe he is prohibited.
Right.
Yes.
Not last year, but a couple of years ago at the Fall Fest, there was one of those all the way up the other end of Central Street. So we can't do that anymore?
Well, for the festival, I would think that might be a little bit different, but like, take for instance, I'm going to call it, the Carriage House had the guy out front.
Right.
And again, it's just a matter of enforcement if this does pass. Because I don't think anywhere in our current bylaws, it says we can't have the dancing man. So it's kind of hard to enforce if it doesn't say, and here it's kind of spelt out, like, no, you can't have them. You know, but for Fall Fest, I think that was kind of fun, you know, to go along with, like, hey, come visit me at the end of the street, so. But yes, but I think they did a great sign, even with, like, yard signs, like temporary signs or signs on town property, Justin has the right to, you know, okay those with a special form that's filled out and with an okay from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I was going to reference those, you know, yard sale signs or signs that a resident wants to put up. And I know the Agricultural Commission, the farmer's market is opening in the May, so we'll be looking to put some signs up as well.
And that would just be the sign form through the Board of Selectmen website with the okay from, from Justin and the board.
Yep, perfect.
If I could just mention, you're talking about the waving man with the, with the ear. That type of sign, if you're having it for a special occasion, you can come to the planning board and because of 9.12, we could approve it if it did not distract and we could give them a certain amount of days and things of that nature. So that's why we put that caveat in there, just in case there are things like that that happen.
Sure, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I, I find the new version much more user-friendly, easier to follow. And it gives, it gives the business person a clear picture of what they need to do. Sort of takes that decision-making out of the board's hand because it's all printed here, they know clearly what to do. I would encourage at the town meeting that the presentation you just gave us, particularly when you were talking about the benefits for the local businesses, do that same thing at the town meeting.
I would be happy to.
Okay.
And give the same examples because that was awesome. I mean, we're talking about promoting business, what's better than promoting a business than having a sign so you know it's there?
Exactly, exactly. And where Central Street's being redone, I mean, just to look up Central Street, I mean, even on Saturday mornings when I'm on Central Street, just to see the open signs, you know, going down the street, I mean, it's nice.
Yeah, so this was very helpful, thank you, well done.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anything further from the board? No? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of hard work, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and then just rounding things out, Article 27, Storm Water Asset Management Project. So you probably remember seeing something like this, something similar pretty recently. So that was for the water asset management back in 2022. This one specifically is for storm water asset management, so it's the same thing, but for a different purpose. The amount that they're requesting specifically is about $15,000 in in-kind contributions, so that would be staff support. It would be about $82,000 grant and then we're requesting about $39,000 in ARPA funds as the, the town financial match. And so the benefit of doing this is, in the same way with the, with the water asset management, it's going to help us better map out, I guess, the existing placement of these assets, but also map out in the future, more timely replacement of these different assets. So you're going to end up saving money in the long run rather than just waiting for things to kind of fail and replacing them at that time. Any questions on that one?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward? I just have a question to tie this in. Last year, you mentioned we approved Article 20, which was Drinking Water and Sewer Asset Management Project. Do we have any status on that last year vote?
In terms of what came from it?
Yeah, has anything happened since then?
Mr. Crowe can speak to it a little bit, but we have launched into that process, I don't know if we have an actual deliverable yet though.
That process is underway, it takes a while to get through it, so it's about, about a year to complete full. But they are actively working on it, it's not something that you can really do during the winter, so they just picked up pace over the last couple of weeks. And they've been in town working with my staff as, as well as myself and we're going to keep moving forward with it.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And that includes the proposed annual town meeting, so I appreciate some of the feedback and edits, we'll make some of those changes. Does anybody have any further questions at this time?
Any comments? All good?
From the board?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:58.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee at 7:58.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
15 ayes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Just before they leave, I would like to let the public know that there is a public hearing of the warrant articles for the special and annual town meeting will be held Wednesday at 7:00 PM here at the auditorium.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday. This is your chance to come and have your say on these articles before town meeting. So I encourage residents, voters to come to the meeting on Wednesday and let the Finance Committee know what you think of these articles.
I'm sorry, what time is it?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock this Wednesday, two nights from now, very good. Thank you.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Saltzback?
We're just asking that the board vote to finalize the warrant as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, with the edits that we had mentioned.
As amended, yeah. Okay. If there's any, any further discussion from the board? Or if there's none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the special annual town meeting warrant for May 15, 2023 with amendments as presented this evening.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? Seen and hearing, none, all in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any chance we could just take two minutes?
Absolutely. I move a two-minute recess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We recessed at 7:59. So I have a proclamation that I would like to read. Whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week shines the light on this important matter. And whereas research has shown that early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health conditions among children and youth and the involvement of family members in their care and treatment provide children and youth better opportunities for full and meaningful lives. And whereas early identification and treatment includes timely services and supports for children and youth from a fully integrated team of diverse resources, including their families, physicians, schools and local communities. And whereas appropriate treatment is family-driven, youth-guided, culturally appropriate and equitable across varying communities and populations. And whereas appropriately treating the mental health needs of children, youth and families today is fundamental to the future of our nation and to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, we, now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of Winchita in Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim May 7th through May 13th, 2023 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week and urge our citizens, businesses and organizations to promote this year's theme, Accept, Advocate, Act, because awareness is not enough in order to help increase equitable access to appropriate treatment and support for children, youth and their families with mental health needs. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Are we going to light up Town Hall Green? Thank you for that week.
Thank you for that. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the proclamation for Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, May 1st to May 7th, 2023, as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded to approve the proclamation, any further discussion? Seen and hearing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, it's been pointed out to me that I skipped 7.2, my apologies to Chief Smith, he's over there wondering what's going on. 7.2 is the review of the draft RFQ for the OPM services for the fire station addition. Mrs. Saltzback?
Thank you, Madam Chair, as you highlighted, we are joined this evening by Chief Smith, if you'd like to come up and add to the conversation. So as part of the next step on the fire station project, you have all worked to appoint a working group to help provide guidance as, as we make our way as a community through this particular project. Chief Smith has put together this draft document, I still have to go through and plug in the dates, but I thank him for the work, for putting this in. Just to give all of you an idea of what we're realistically looking like in terms of steps moving forward. We do have Schwartz Silver in place for an architect, but we do not have an OPM. And so this is very much going to mirror the process that we went through about a year ago for the old Murdoch, going through a lot of the same questions, just making sure that we get a firm in place that will be able to keep a watchful eye on, on this project, which have approved would be a pretty significant investment and given the, the dollar threshold of the project by law, we're required to have an OPM.
Mrs., excuse me, just for the record, what is an OPM?
Oh, excuse me, owner's project manager. So it's effectively like a clerk of the works and they provide day-to-day oversight on large-scale initiatives.
Thank you.
I take for granted sometimes that people understand the, the alphabet soup, so thank you. So with that said, the draft document for us kind of gives you a good idea of what we're looking at in, in terms of, you know, qualification-based submissions from qualified firms. There are a few that have expressed interest, both to myself and the chief, over the past year or so, so people are chomping at the bit, they are interested in going through this process.
Sorry, a little bit slower.
Sure, they're, they are chomping at the bit and interested in going through this process.
Okay.
So what we're realistically looking like is having this going out to bid shortly after town meeting, I believe the, the date we had talked about releasing it was the 24th. shortly after town meeting, I believe the date we had talked about releasing it was the 24th. And having it out for about four weeks, coming back sometime in June. So that way you'll be able to have an OPM set in place that will be selected by the committee that you all had appointed over the past couple of Board of Selectment meetings. Chief, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, we're going to just go through the process, like you said, the same process as other projects. And we're going to look to make sure somebody that's qualified to work on a fire station, that's got some type of experience in that field as far as that type of project. But there's also a whole list of qualifications that we'll be looking to go through and make sure that everybody meets, the final person meets it, what's best for the town.
Thank you. Do you need anything from us at this point?
Nope, this was just provided as info and to give the public an update, just to let them know where we're at with this.
Great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Yes, Mrs. Salter.
How much do you anticipate this is going to cost?
That's a great question. So the, I believe the number we're looking at is under nine million, probably closer to about eight and a half million if it were to go through, all said and done.
So am I wrong, you're looking for the project manager to oversee the design and construction of a new building, but yet the new building hasn't been approved, the cost?
And when I say cost, I want to know for that person, like what do you think this?
Over the position?
Basically, not just on the project, but the project manager would also oversee as the bids come in for the architectural, the secondary bidders, their subcontractors. And it'd protect the town by having the person in place to actually help review that portion of it, not just the actual functional building of it. But by having them in place that protects the town to make sure that they're not designing something that ultimately can't be built.
So in the same way that we did it with the old Murdoch, we're going to break the OPM services out into phases. And so like Chief highlighted, they'll be there to provide oversight throughout the design phase. They'll provide another chunk or phase for bid document creation and going through the bid solicitation process that you'd pay out if you got to that point. And they would have a construction oversight phase. So it's pretty typical to break it out into those three phases. So what you're looking for right now is an OPM that you would have onboard, ideally for all three of those phases when the project goes through. But for now, you can kind of pay them à la carte as they move their way through each phase.
Okay, and is that like part of the eight to nine million dollars?
Yes. So soft costs, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Just a couple of things, and I had sent these to the Town Manager. Inside the description, where it says project description, it says this location was the former, is the fire headquarters, the former police station and former 9/11 center. That state station where you are was never the police station.
No, part of this is something that I still need to, it's still a draft, we're making some adjustments on some of these.
And there's also a paragraph that says there was state violations when the police were in here, and they're talking about this building here, which is right outside.
We're taking a lot of that out.
That all needs to be taken out of there because it's confusing.
Yep, so this is just base level draft, apologize for the confusion. So we're going to be working on polishing this and it's going, like I said, it's going to be going out in about a month. So this is our starting point, we're going to be working on it and it'll eventually be released in four weeks.
Our main goal was to make sure to keep this board apprised of where we are and that we're still moving forward with the project and just to keep the public aware of that we're still continuing on with what we've discussed in the past.
Thank you, yes, appreciate the update. Anything further from the board? Thank you very much, Chief. All right, old business, 8.1, a review of the Joint Water Authority water contract. Mr. Saltzbeck, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is specifically the Joint Water Authority water and wastewater agreements. So attached to your packet, you're going to see agreements for those two items. As you're aware, and just for the public's sake, we do have joint water services with Ashburnham through the Joint Water Authority. Wastewater operations, however, are covered exclusively by the Town of Winchonan and is not a shared facility. So water services for the upcoming period come out to $416,800, with 70% coming to us and 30% coming to Ashburnham. Wastewater services for the upcoming period come out to $885,916. And as you've all seen in recent reviews of the budget process, these figures have been accounted for in the Balanced Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds without the need to increase rates beyond those that are proposed and approved last year in your conversation. So these are within budget and in line. So with your support, I'll be signing these documents at the upcoming Ashburnham-Winchonan Joint Water Authority meeting this Thursday, April 27th. But I wanted to provide an opportunity to bring it before the board and to enlighten the public. So there is a recommended motion at the bottom. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. I'll open up to the board. One question I have, when we get around to fixing the water main, will that have any effect on this agreement?
It will not have any impact on this agreement, but it would, I would anticipate, just as a reminder for the sake of transparency, that I would anticipate there to be a financial impact. So where you all have your, you know, regular conversations about increasing the rate just based on, you know, year-to-year increases in operating costs, you're holding that conversation separate from having to do that water pipe.
Correct.
And so, and once we narrow that down, we should have a, I'd say sooner rather than later, honestly, something pretty close, the state has confirmed the two million. That should go through sooner rather than later. If, I guess without getting, I don't want to stray too far from the item in hand, but just to give kind of people an idea of what we're envisioning here. Realistically, once it's approved and then once we borrow and once we get shovels in the ground, say it's a year or more, you're not making your first payment for probably two years. And so there's a couple of ways you could approach that. You could put it off and not raise rates until you have to start making those payments. On an early level, my recommendation would be to make those increases now and start banking that money to pay down and save you money in the long run on interest. It's going to, putting it off is going to give you temporary comfort with a long-term hurt, I mean so many words. So just something to be mindful of.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
This is a five-year contract?
It's a three-year contract with a two-year extension.
Extension options, correct.
But the two years, option, not?
We would come back for that.
Even though the figures are already firm in here in 8.1?
Correct.
I'm not yelling, I'm sorry, it's my voice.
Your mask talking, it's hard.
I don't like it.
What don't you like?
I don't like Veolia. You want me to go down that road again? You really want to pull at that thread?
I mean, we get our water with Ashburnham, there's not a lot of negotiation.
There's nothing I can do about Ashburnham, but I can, the wastewater, I'm all set with. And that's the one that's really gone up exorbitantly, really bad. And I feel like we could do better if we brought it back in-house.
Conversation for another die-in time, I recognize it, Mrs. Anderson. I think that that's a conversation that we're going to have again real soon when we start looking at rates and such like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, but that's too late after we've given permission to sign another three-year agreement.
This is for the water.
And then there's the sewer.
Water and wastewater.
Okay, so it is for both, thank you.
But I would just stress as a reminder for people watching at home, we don't just hand these contracts out. We did go through the process of soliciting interests from other firms and no other firm was interested.
But we've never gone through the process of bringing it back in-house the way it was before we outsourced it. We never should have done that.
So I would offer in response to that, for the second water study that we did, the 25,000, it was their recommendation to not bring it in-house. They had referenced seven vulnerabilities organizationally that you would be inheriting. So for example, if you had a large piece of equipment go down, if you had a water operator walk out on the job or a wastewater operator walk out on the job, we don't have a roster of people to draw from to replace it. You'd have no way to fill that role. And that work is becoming increasingly specialized. And so it was the recommendation of an outside consultant that specializes in this area of work to not bring it in-house.
But that outside consultant, with all due respect, also does a number of jobs with Veolia in conjunction with, because I Googled them to see if there was a correlation, and in fact, there was.
So when we went through that process, I believe we brought forward five different firms and requested that this board, if they had any objection to us using that firm, come forward at that time. And at that time, no member of the board came forward with a concern.
I did, I believe I did.
I do not believe you did.
Okay, so at the moment, this is what we have before us. Your concern is noted, Mrs. Anderson. Questions, comments? If there's none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to support the Town Manager in signing the water and wastewater agreements without raising rates beyond those approved last year as presented this evening.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, can we add discussion?
Seconded for discussion?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. So it's been made and seconded for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Lapointe, yes.
Has any negotiation happened in terms of the five years of rates that are included in both of these contracts?
Yep, so they don't, and I appreciate that you looked into that. So it's not as if they just gave us a number and we said, okay, where do we sign? They did actually come back with a higher number. And we did go back and forth with them several times over to try to tighten this figure up. And to the credit of Veolia, and I understand the dynamic between them and some members of the board and the history in the town, but to their credit, they did come to the table and come down a little bit. A lot of what they're seeing in terms of increases are a lot of things that it's not just in Winchonan, it's across the entire industry. So increases in labor costs, increases in chemical costs. If you might remember, within the last year or so, we had to go back and dip into ARPA money to offset some of that spike in chemical costs. Those are things that are passed right on to us unfortunately, and they can't absorb. So we do go through and vet that. We do hold their feet to the fire in areas where we can. But other areas are just kind of indicative of the way the market is right now across the board in all industries.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
My hesitation here is if you think of National Grid, and I realize the two utilities are different, but National Grid, you know, they're approved by the state, but they've told us that their rates are going to be coming down now 35%. If something happens in the market with Veolia, we're still tied into this five-year astronomical figure.
So I wouldn't anticipate that type of volatility to occur. But Brian, if you want to add anything to that?
I had the language put in the contract that if there is a vast decrease, we will receive credit for that.
We did?
Yep, I made sure that was followed through because I'm not convinced that the chemical costs and the material costs are going to stay as high as they are. So I want to be able to protect the town and have that verbiage in there, just like we did when they took over the plant, the same verbiage is there. So if the prices come down, there's a small split, but we're going to have the savings.
Thank you.
And to Brian's credit, he advocated for that on his own, so good job.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding, it talks about water services, second paragraph for the upcoming period. What is that period? Is it the initial three years?
So I negotiated that out too. Our other contract was October to October and February to February, I believe. And I don't like split-year budgets. So I told them that I wanted the budget to run July to July, or July to June 30th. So we're in the same fiscal year because it makes it a lot easier for us to put our budgets together. We're not trying to put a budget together for, you know, a split year, I don't like that.
So the way that this is presented and the way that it has been moved, again, to continue on paragraph two, as you have seen in recent reviews of our budget process, these figures have been accounted for in the Balanced Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds without the need to increase rates beyond those proposed and approved last year. And again, in the motion, it is without raising rates beyond those approved last year as present, as present?
Oh, sorry, as presented.
Presented.
Typo.
So we don't have to, without raising, making any changes to the rates, the level that we're at now, we can fund FY '24, the July 1, '23 to June 30, '24, as this says here.
Wait, based on the budgeted, the already budgeted increases? So this coming through isn't going to say, oh, we need an additional 3% or 5%? It's what you agreed upon last year.
As what's already been agreed upon and in place. There's nothing additional coming down the road.
Correct.
So the bills are going to increase, but only by what we already?
Already agreed to, yep.
That's what I wanted to clarify. All right, thank you.
And that we use largely as a bargaining chip in negotiating with them is that this is our number and we can't really go beyond that, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything further on discussion? All right, we do have a motion on the floor, it has been discussed. The motion is to authorize the Town Manager. As the motion was read by Mr. Ward, it has been seconded, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. It does pass four ayes, one no. Thank you for that. Next up, 8.2, the draft policies. I would like to poll the board in consideration of the hour we spent on the warrant articles this evening. Would the board have any objection if we postpone 8.2?
Madam Chair?
Our next meeting.
I would love to make a motion to postpone the reading of the draft policies, even though I know you worked hard on it.
That's okay.
I would like to postpone it till after town meeting, when we have a little bit more time.
I'm fine with that. My other thought of that also is after town meeting, we'll have to say goodbye to Mrs. Salter and we will have the new member on board. So it makes sense to.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. Made and seconded to postpone. Whatever the schedule looks like, if we could put that on the first agenda of the regular meeting following town, that would be great. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next up, Town Manager's report, Mrs. Saltzbeck, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the financial side of things, the fiscal '24 budget is officially finalized, congrats, good work. The reporting for ARPA funds is due this upcoming Thursday and our accounting team is presently working to ensure we make the required federal deadline for that reporting, so we're working through that together. On the personnel side of things, there are no vacancies at this time. For project updates, work is underway on Central Street with the remaining granite curbs being set on Monday and concrete sidewalks to follow on the Clark side with the final top coat to occur on the road in late spring. The amphitheater in Winchonan Community Park is in full swing and we're on target to have everything in place and time for the June 10th grand opening. The Wachusett Brewing Company has come back as the vendor for the Winchonan Community Park 2023 season. And I just wanted to make a note because we saw some chatter on Facebook about this, you know, why aren't we supporting Bull Spit? Bull Spit did not bid on that collaboration.
Mr. Town Manager, could I, I was just, when I was reading that same chatter, it occurred to me that because they didn't have their proper licensing that we just granted them at our last meeting, I'm thinking that's why they didn't.
Oh, no, we worked with them directly on it and they had expressed that they felt like they would be competing against themselves, in so many words.
I remember that.
Yeah, but also there's a unique dynamic among the brewing industry that having multiple breweries pouring within a same geographic area actually benefits both of them equally, like a cross-pollination effect economically. I'll find an article on it, it's pretty interesting. So they felt it was to their benefit to have a competitor there because people are more willing to make a drive to the region if they can sample two beers. Yeah, it's true. So, right? The math checks out, so.
Are we opening any new hotels when they drink too much?
Yeah, yeah, right?
That's my job, why do we even have to serve beer there? Can't it be just a family thing where it's non-alcohol related?
Some events are, a good portion of them are. But I think, for instance, if there's music and things like that, there has been an interest in the community to have some type of adult option.
Can I just, for the sake of argument, the- Can I just, for the sake of argument, the Chili Festival was a whole lot better when they served beer. I'm just saying.
We're in agreement.
I'm sure they will this year because it's at Bullspit.
And I heard they might be...
It's at Bullspit.
Oh, the chili thing?
Yeah. And I went, you know, because you will pick up, I'm just saying.
Okay.
And a nod to Brian and Tiffany for putting the work in on landing Wachusett for that, that was a pretty good get. Bids have come back for the upcoming paving plan, as Brian mentioned. I do want to note Pleasant Street is set to be paved this May, so, look forward to that. We're waiting on bids for the Town Hall Copola with work still expected to take place this spring. We're struggling with the amount we had approved at town meeting, but we're trying to find a way to make it work, just finding someone that's willing to do it for that amount, but we don't want to underpay someone to a degree that they do a bad job, so we're walking a line on that one. Soil testing is going to take place at Beach Street upcoming to ensure the soil is clean. There was some Facebook chatter on that with some experts. So, we do have an LSP who oversees that project. They do coordinate with Mass DEP. They will be going through and taking soils with a sample, and we are doing everything on the up and up on that highly visible parcel. And we're still waiting on word from the Mass Trails Grant Program for the application our team submitted for the Webster Street parcel to extend the bike path through downtown, so we haven't heard anything yet, but we're keeping an eye out for it. And then, just on the miscellaneous end of things, as a reminder, the Finance Committee will be hosting a public hearing upcoming on Wednesday, and I've met with some members of a self-described Winchpinon Youth Advisory Committee, or WAAC, who are looking to come to an upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting in June to discuss the formation of an official town youth committee. They seem really excited and energized to go through that, so it was fun to sit down with them and walk them through the process, so that might be something fun and light coming up.
Any questions for Mr. Saltzbeck on his report? And I see none, thank you very much. All right, we have two sets of minutes. The first was a quad board meeting Monday, January 17, 2023. These were missed at an earlier meeting. Thank you. Tiffany, bye, bye, Chief, thank you. One thing I'm not sure about this, it says that I arrived at 6:34, but the meeting wasn't called to order until 7:00. I just wonder if you could, did I miss something?
It was probably from a previous meeting and I just didn't get taken home.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, that's fine, thank you, because there was one meeting that I came in a little bit late.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's all I had. Give the board a moment to review, and when you're ready, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from the quad board meeting of January 17, 2023, as presented this evening.
Seconded.
Thank you, made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. And then, we have one other set. It is the minutes of our regular meeting on Monday, April 10, 2023.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Anderson?
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the meeting on April 10, 2023.
Seconded.
Thank you, made and seconded. All in, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for those. No communications. Our next meeting is...
Thursday.
This Thursday.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just make note about your executive session, the wording, I forgot to update it, and so I apologize for that wording. You and I had discussed something that was a little better, so that wording is due to me, my apologies.
Thank you very much. So, we're meeting this Thursday. And so, we do have an executive session. I move that the board enter executive session under Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A, Number Two, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, discussion on future town manager role.
Seconded.
Thank you, made and seconded. Roll call vote, Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mrs. Lapointe?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We are in executive session at 8:36.